Good evening, councillors, officers and our viewers live streaming tonight's meeting. My name is councillor Suzanne Newton, I'm the mayor of Darabin and the chairperson of tonight's meeting. It's my pleasure to welcome you to tonight's council meeting and I declare the meeting open at 6:03pm. This meeting is a scheduled hybrid meeting and while we don't have any councillors online, I believe we will have a member of the public attending online. The meeting is being livestreamed and a recording will be made available on the council website as soon as practicable after the meeting. I'd first like to acknowledge the Wurundjeri Woiwarrang people as the traditional owners of this land and I pay my deep respects to elders past and present. I recognise their continuing connection to land, water and culture and I also show my support for Treaty of Victoria and I'm very pleased with how that's progressing at the moment. I'll now go to item three, which is introducing the councillors and senior staff who are with us tonight. We have councillor Tim Lawrence, the deputy mayor, councillor Emily Demetrius, councillor Tom Hannan, councillor Trent McCarthy, councillor Lena Messina and councillor Susan Reddy. Our officers in attendance tonight are Peter Smith, the CEO, Kylie Bennetts, the general manager of community, Ina Jampicolo, the acting general manager, customer and corporate, Rachel Olivia, the general manager, infrastructure, operations and finance, Vanessa Petrie, the general manager, city sustainability and strategy and Felicity Walsh, the interim manager, governance and communications. Item three is apologies. We have apologies from councillor Greco and councillor Williams tonight. And item four is disclosures of conflicts of interest. Councillors and officers, are there any conflicts of interest or interest to declare? Peter?
Through you, mayor, I believe. There's an urgent item being added tonight. If that is added, it relates to appointment of a councillor to the CEO Employment Matters Committee and if that motion is brought up, I'll declare a conflict and ask Ina to take my chair.
Thank you, that's fine. Have we got any other disclosures of conflicts of interest or interest to declare? No. Okay, we'll go on to item five, which is the confirmation of the minutes of previous meetings. Councillors, could I please have a move for the adoption of the minutes of the ordinary council meeting held on the 24th of June 2024? That's moved by councillor Lawrence, seconded by councillor Reddy. I'll put that straight to the vote. All those in favour? That's carried unanimously. And we'll go on to item six, council's occupational health and safety responsibilities. Council has an occupational health and safety responsibility to ensure anyone attending tonight's meeting feels safe, both physically and emotionally. It's great to see everyone here this evening. I'd like to remind everyone in attendance to please be respectful of each other and as outlined in the governance rules, please note the following. A councillor or any other person who addresses a meeting must do so in a courteous and respectful manner. A must take direction from the chairperson whenever called on to do so. Any member of the public physically attending a meeting must not utter any offensive, indecent, insulting or objectionable items or words, including words that are racist, sexist or homophobic or interject or gesticulate offensively in the council chamber. Silence must be preserved by the gallery at all times during a meeting, other than by a person in the gallery who's invited to address the meeting. If any member engages in contact that is improper or disorderly, the chairperson may direct that person to cease their conduct and the person must comply with that direction. I'll just note at this point that with councillor Greco, an apology tonight, we won't be dealing with the two notices of motion, so they have been withdrawn from this meeting. I'll now go on to item seven, which is public question time. Councillors, we have 30 minutes of public question time. If we exceed that time, I'll ask for procedural motion to extend question time for another 30 minutes. In line with council's governance rules, no questions will be taken from people in the gallery unless they were submitted by 12 noon today. You can only ask three questions and you cannot speak for more than two minutes. Please be mindful, this is question time, so please only ask your question, not make a statement. Questions relating to notices of motion, petitions or urgent business will not be accepted in accordance with the governance rules. For members of the public who've registered to ask a question in person, I'll call your name when it's time. If I call your name and you do not respond, I'll take it you're not in the gallery and one of our officers will read the question on your behalf. The relevant general manager will then provide a response. If you are in attendance in person or virtually, I'll invite you to come to the lectern or unmute your microphone to state your name and ask your question. Like questions will be grouped together. The first person who's submitted a like question can ask their question. So, do we have Robyn in the audience from Preston? No. Okay, Jodie, we might get you to ask her question, please, about aged care.
Thank you, Mayor through you. Robyn has three questions. The first is, at what steps has council taken to prepare to meet the requirements of the imminent introduction of the new aged care support at home program?
Jodie, I've just seen Robyn arrive. Robyn, you're first up with questions. Would you like to come to the lectern and ask them? No, no problem at all, Robyn. So you're very welcome and we do have you first up. So please feel free to ask your three questions.
Well, you've read my questions, so...
We were just beginning, so if you wouldn't mind asking your three questions, we can get the answers for you.
Okay. Oh, very curvy. What steps has council taken to prepare for the imminent introduction of the new aged care support at home program and its requirements? Do I answer, ask all three questions?
Yes, please, and then we'll get the responses for you.
Can council please explain why the regional aged care assessment staff recently lost their council positions? And another question, on what basis did council decide not to tender to provide the new single aged care assessment service for this area?
Thank you very much, Robyn, for your three questions. I'm going to Kylie for the responses.
Through you, mayor. Robyn, thank you for your questions. Council is actively working to ready its aged care services to ensure council continues to be the aged care provider of choice for the Darabin community. The steps council is taking include implementing a range of service improvements and working with KPMG to enable council to have a sustainable aged care service model, once the current Commonwealth Home Support Program becomes part of the Support at Home Program in July 2027, at the earliest, depending on Australian government announcements. In terms of question two, council was subcontracted by the Victorian Department of Health to deliver the regional assessment service within the city of Darabin. Earlier this year, the department provided advice that it was no longer continuing this arrangement with local government and the Commonwealth then conducted a limited tender for providers to deliver assessments in Victoria from July to December 2024, at which time we expect a new single aged care system will commence across Australia. Darabin council did submit a tender for the regional assessment service extension. However, we were unfortunately advised on the 19th of June that council's submission was not successful. Council therefore ceased to deliver Commonwealth assessment services from the 1st of July and arrangements for assessment staff were implemented in line with council's enterprise agreement. Assessment staff were kept informed and supported by council through the process and the manager of the area participated in the Commonwealth RAS Transitional Advisory Group to support the transition to the new providers of assessment services in Darabin. In terms of the new single aged care assessment service, the tender for that process is still live and as such, council's decisions in relation to this matter are confidential at this point for commercial and confidence reasons. However, once the tender process is complete, council will have further information it can share on this important topic.
Thank you, Kylie. And I just want to also publicly thank the regional aged care assessment staff for their incredible work over the last couple of decades. I'll go on to, is Karen Large, would you like to come to the lectern and ask your questions? Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. My questions tonight are on behalf of Darabin Climate Action Now. They relate to agenda item 9.3, the Darabin Climate Emergency Plan. So, under pillar three, community resilient, the resilience, the action item 3.6.1 refers to the delivery of community education and capacity building campaigns on energy literacy and efficiency, food resilience and water saving that reach at least 2,500 residents annually, prioritising people in Darabin who are most vulnerable to heat stress, food inequity and energy inequity. So, in the draft plan that went to council in February this year and was put out for community consultation, the target was 5,000 residents annually. And so, we would like to know why has this target been halved to 2,500 residents annually? Shall I read the second question?
Yes, please, then we'll get the response.
Yeah. The draft climate emergency plan that went to council in February included a box outlining Darabin council's climate emergency principles on page 46. These principles are also referred to in a response box on page 262 of the Community Engagement Stage Two Report. Why have the principles been left out of the proposed final plan?
Thank you, Karen, and thank you, Deacon, for your ongoing work. I'll go to Vanessa for the responses.
Through you, mayor. Thank you for your questions, Karen. Regarding your first question, the information received through the community consultation process has been critical in preparing the proposed final climate emergency plan. When new or changed actions have been included, the scope of other actions have been reviewed to ensure the plan remains achievable. The change from the consultation draft had the electrification campaign separated into a new action, which is item 2.2.2, and the target was adjusted to suit these updates. Regarding your second question, the listed climate emergency principles have been integrated into the final proposed climate emergency plan.
Thanks, Vanessa, and I'll go to Carolyn Lunt of Northcote for your three questions.
Carolyn Lunt, Northcote, thank you, mayor, councillors. I'd like to thank the council for the Lifetime Achievement Award I received last year. This year, I've made two customer service requests. The first request, I asked for the styrofoam balls to be vacuumed from the verge on Short Street down from Cunningham Street in Northcote. Most probably came from residents' bins after a recent collection. These balls are still present on the nature strip. The second sighting in June were styrofoam balls heading to a drain clogged with debris in Laurie Street close to High Street. I sent a snap send and solve request on the 17th of the 6th and these balls were still there on the 8th of the 7th before the recent rains. Last week after rain, I went to the low level bridge over the Mary Creek and discovered a wash of white styrofoam along the riparian zone left by the water's edge. Just let me show you what I collected in 20 minutes. 20 minutes. Plus, I'll add eight tennis balls, three plastic balls, a golf ball, nine plastic bottles, including a toddler's bottle, a biro and a shoe with enough litter to fill a plastic shopping bag, all needed to be binned.
Thank you, Carolyn. You've just got one minute left, so please ask your questions.
I know, that's why I'm racing. The first question, is the Darabin City Council aware of the amount of styrofoam that enters our waterways? And if so, what efforts are being undertaken to address this environmental disaster? Two, will the council investigate and explore all avenues to prevent styrofoam from entering our environment, including a ban on the sale of styrofoam as well as the styrofoam balls found in beanbags? Question three, does Darabin council have a facility similar to the city of Yarra where residents can have their styrofoam recycled? In the meantime, I'm willing to purchase a vacuum blower for the city of Darabin that can be used to remove styrofoam balls from the city, because you may not have one. The prices are ranging from petrol, $4.29, a battery $700 and electric blower vac $3.49. Also, evaluation, education of residents is of the utmost importance, as is a site where styrofoam can be taken to be recycled, as happens at Yarra. Sorry to rush. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Carolyn. We'll go to Rachel for the responses.
Thank you, through you, mayor. So, in terms of the first question of, do we know how much styrofoam enters the waterways? We don't specifically monitor that, so we don't have data about it. I wouldn't expect, sort of, in a minute, I'll explain a little bit more about what council does do. I would say, I wouldn't expect our services to prevent or collect the litter that we see out there. We see a range of litter. What we do have is about 30 gross pollutant traps across the city. They help collect a range of the larger pollutants and help keep litter out of the waterways. In terms of the next question about, will council investigate and explore all the avenues to prevent styrofoam from entering the environment, including a ban? Certainly, council doesn't have the power to ban sale of products. That's something to raise with the state or federal government. What we do have in place and certainly plan to continue is ongoing provision of disposal services for community and education about how to use those. So, all households have access to curbside bins at the front of their house. We ask that styrofoam is disposed of into red littered garbage bins. We also work with a range of community groups to help collect and minimise litter and those programmes include the Rapid Response to Litter Initiative and Clean Up Australia Day events. Certainly, I would acknowledge that even though a lot of effort goes towards dealing with litter, there is still plenty of litter around the city. And do we have a facility like the city of Yarra for recycling of styrofoam? No, we don't offer that. We ask that residents dispose of styrofoam in red littered garbage bins.
Thank you very much, Rachel. We've now got questions from Marion from Pasco Vale. So, Jodie, are you happy to read those questions on Marion's behalf, please?
Thank you, through you, mayor. Marion has three questions. The first is, what is the estimated cost of the Victorian Electoral Commission services for conducting the 2024 Darabin council election and for compulsory voting enforcement? Her second question is on pages 318 and 366 of the agenda tonight. There was conflicting information about when the Chair of the Audit and Risk Committee commenced, but they were first appointed in 2016. Is there any recommended maximum period of tenure for independent members of this committee? And the third question was, can the Charter of the Audit and Risk Committee please be made available on council's website?
Thanks, Jodie. I'll go to Ina for those responses. Thank you.
Thank you and through you, mayor, and thanks, Marion, for the questions. In regard to your first question, the estimates that we've received from the VEC for the 2024 election are as follows. For election costs, $766,300 and for compulsory enforcement, $178,428. These estimates are subject to a list of prescribed variations that will allow the cost to be varied based on the actual candidacy, enrolment and turnout and these variations will be applied for invoicing. With regard to your second question around the tenure of the Chair of the Audit Committee, the ARC Charter at clause 14, sorry, ARC being Audit and Risk Committee, at clause 4.15 states that the external members are to be appointed for a three-year term with an option for a further three-year term by mutual consent. Lisa Tripodi has been, had been a member of the previous Audit Committee, but the current term is her first term with the newly constituted ARC and therefore she's eligible for a further term and has provided her consent to do so. This question of tenure was considered at the time of her appointment to the new committee and set out in the governance report for the council meeting of 23 August 2021. Mr. Tripodi's statement refers to her appointment to the previous committee, which was an audit committee only. Her first appointment to the current Audit and Risk Committee commenced on the 23rd of August 2021. And finally, with regard to your third question about the charter being made available on the council website, I can confirm the Audit and Risk Committee Charter is now available on our website. It's in the policies and transparency section and we will be sure to publish the link to the document in the minutes of this council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ina. Our next questioner is Serena O'Malley of Reservoir, who I believe is attending virtually. Are we able to get her dialed into the meeting, please? Serena?
Good evening, can you hear us okay? Yes, I can.
Great, please go ahead with your questions.
Just bear with me for one second. Okay. The minutes of the last Darabin council meeting originally omitted the surnames and suburbs of residents who had asked questions and made budget submissions. After I complained on public interest and transparency grounds, the full names of public question time or public question time were reinstated in accordance with the governance rules, but the suburbs were not reinstated. I requested the suburbs be reinstated in the minutes. I'm seeking an explanation for why the longstanding practice of publishing the full name and suburb was changed.
Thanks, Serena. And did you want to ask your second question and then we'll go to the responses?
Sure. Please tell me the number and proportion as a percentage of Darabin's aged care staff who were employed as casuals in June 2023 and June 2024.
Thank you very much. So, for the question about the minutes, I'll go to Ina.
Thank you, through you, mayor. Thanks for the question, Serena. Council's governance rule 14.57 and 15.47 state that the name of a person submitting a public question or making a verbal submission to be recorded in the minutes and this information is also published on the public question and submission webpage. Council strives to comply with the governance rules while also balancing compliance with privacy obligation and that is, we must not hold or disclose any more information that is necessary to comply with our obligations. There is currently no basis in the governance rules for disclosing the suburb of a person who makes a submission and once a lack of basis for disclosing the suburb was, suburb of a submitter was identified, officers made an operational decision in the interest of compliance that the suburb of a submitter should not be included. As mentioned in our email response to you about this matter, council is planning a review of its governance rules shortly and we encourage your feedback and participation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ina, and I'll go to Kylie for the question about aged care staff.
Through you, mayor. Thank you for your question, Serena. The figures that I'll quote are for the whole of the Supported and Connected Living Department, which provide aged care service delivery here at council. So, in June 2023, 2.8% of our staff in that department were employed as casual and that was a total of five staff out of 177. In June 2024, 2.76% of staff in that department were employed as casual and that was five of 181 staff. Just in terms of transparency, as of the 1st of July 2024, with the cessation of the Commonwealth Regional Assessment Service, the number of casual staff reduced to three of 170 staff, which equates to 1.76%.
Thank you, Kylie, and thank you, Serena, for being with us tonight. I'll go to John Nugent of Epping. Would you like to ask your questions, John?
John Nugent, Epping. Mayor, I've got three questions, I'm sorry, mayor. Could you please advise, what is the cost to the ratepayers of the city of Darabin for planting trees and shrubs in the city? If council are looking for savings in the budget, it shouldn't plant any trees or shrubs as they are no longer looked after once they have been planted. This is a saving in the budget. Want me to keep going, mayor?
Thank you. Yes, please, John.
These are all about savings tonight, mayor. Mayor, could you please advise, if this council is paying, if this council is paying over $3 million a year for consultants, then why do we need general managers? This is another saving in the budget. And thirdly, if this is council, I really want to save money in the budget and councillors are receiving nearly half a million dollars in allowances, then why are the ratepayers of this city paying for an unnecessary perk of supplying meals before council meetings? What is the cost, what is the costing of our ratepayers for this perk?
Thank you very much for your questions, John. Respectfully, I very much disagree about the general managers, but I will go to Rachel for the questions about allowances and planting trees.
Thanks, mayor. Hi, John. So, in terms of planting trees, essentially, thanks for the suggestion. It's a matter for council to consider in its next budget. And I think the, in regards to providing dinner, certainly providing a modest dinner is a longstanding practice at Darabin and at many councils, largely because council meetings often go late into the evening and follow a long day. Again, though, the suggestion about changing this is a matter that council can consider at its next budget.
Thank you, Rachel, and I'll go to Ina. Oh, sorry. So, would you like to contribute?
Yeah, just through you, mayor. I think Mr. Nugent also asked about the costing. We'll take that on notice for you, Mr. Nugent, see if we can get you a rough figure.
Thank you, Peter, and I'll go to Ina for the question about consultants.
Thank you, mayor, through you. Thanks for the question, John. Local government sector is complex and as with many organisations, any organisation running more than 100 services, specialist advice is required from time to time. This often involves buying an expertise on issues that we don't have the capability in-house for, so we can solve the challenging problems and often doing so with fresh eyes. This approach is usually more cost effective than bringing new staff in-house and these costs are regularly reviewed during the annual budget process.
Thank you very much, Ina. Do we have Kate Polglaze of Reservoir? Oh, sorry, Kate Polglaze of Reservoir. Jodie, I'll get you to ask her questions, please.
Thank you, through you, mayor. Kate has a couple of questions here, I think. The first is in relation to community sport. Many sporting grounds such as Maya Park have poor drainage leading to training being cancelled and games being forfeited when the picture's not in usable condition. What support can council offer in the short term to ensure training remains accessible in inclement weather and what are the long-term plans to fix the ground so that they do not become unstable when it rains? Sorry, that's Kate's only question. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, I did say questions, but I will go, and that's my fault, I will go to Kylie for that response, please.
Through you, mayor. Thank you for your question, Kate. We certainly appreciate the difficulties faced by sports clubs resulting from inclement weather. Unfortunately, this is a common occurrence across many sports grounds and councils in Victoria. Best practice turf management is to manage access and ground usage to support ground conditions across the whole season and prioritise competition over training when necessary. Unfortunately, extreme weather conditions last week meant officers needed to ask clubs to cancel training at all grounds, including Maya Park, from Monday to Wednesday to prioritise the weekend competition. In terms of the support council can provide, officers regularly work with clubs to provide access to alternate venues where possible. However, this isn't always possible, particularly when all outdoor venues are impacted by significant rainfall. Officers recently undertook minor turf works at Maya Park to improve drainage and playing conditions and this meant at least one pitch at Maya Park was available for training last Thursday. Council has an outdoor sports infrastructure framework which identifies sporting infrastructure needs, including sports field irrigation and draining priorities and that supports the delivery of council's long-term capital works program. With a significant number of community assets to manage and maintain, including more than 53 sports fields, council has sought to balance these priorities with the need for financial sustainability. Council recognises the need for improved drainage at Maya Park. However, other grounds are identified as higher priorities at this time. The new council will consider priorities for the 2526 capital program and beyond.
Thank you, Kylie, and I'll go to Connie Boglister of Reservoir. Can you ask your questions, please?
Thank you. Question one, residents are concerned about the safety of their children crossing Elizabeth Street and the need to improve the speed limit. What What has council done to make this happen? Question two, Edward Street businesses have told me that safety is an issue, especially when they're trading late. Since the police station relocated, increased safety measures have been put in place by the local businesses and they have added their own cameras. However, there are many other factors, one being community services be available for people seeking support along Spring Street, Edward Street and Edwards Lake. Will council consider a peer support outreach service to assist and direct people into the services they so desperately are needing? Question three, Chris Park is a much-loved and utilised space for the community and for sports clubs inclusively. When will council invest in a lighting upgrade to improve the safety around the area, as well as the dedicated change rooms to, change rooms for women? The clubs and their presidents have been seeking your feedback for many years now with no avail.
Thank you, Connie. I'll respond to the last one before we go with the general managers. We do work very closely with the Reservoir Sporting Club, the Preston Cricket Club, and also the dog off-leash owners. And we have upgraded lighting in the last couple of years. But I will go to Kylie for the other responses. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Through you, Mayor. Thank you, Connie, for your questions. I'll answer question one. So the section of Elizabeth Street between Bell Street and Murray Road is managed by the Department of Transport and Planning. We've previously approached the department to request funding to install a pedestrian-operated signal near Raymond Street. Instead of funding, the department has confirmed that this project will be considered for development funding in future years. Recently, the speed limit was changed on Mary Parade and West Scar Street and the Department of Transport and, on department and transport managed roads from 60 to 50 to improve safety. Officers will continue to request speed limit changes on other roads, including Elizabeth Street, which is in line with our transport strategy.
Through you, Mayor. Connie, I'll answer the second and third question. In terms of the second question, thank you for your insight as well as your question. Council certainly encourages anyone that feels there is a safety threat to contact Victoria Police immediately. Council works closely with Victoria Police to address safety concerns across the municipality, including this activity centre and Edwards Lake. As part of the revitalisation programme for this activity centre, the state government provided time limited funding for additional outreach, support and connection to community services. There are no funds allocated to undertake this activity within council's budget in 2425. But council is currently in the process of developing a community safety framework to outline council's role and responses to community safety across the municipality. Consideration of your idea would be a matter for the new council as part of the development of the community safety framework and the 2526 council health and wellbeing plan and budget. In terms of your third question, council's outdoor sports infrastructure framework identifies sporting infrastructure needs, including sports field lighting upgrades and gender-inclusive change facilities, which supports the delivery of council's longer-term capital works programme. As highlighted previously, council does have a large number of community assets and does need to balance the priorities for spending across a large number of those. Council certainly recognises the need for improved lighting and gender-inclusive change facilities at Chris Park. However, both are listed as medium priorities in the outdoor sports infrastructure framework when compared with other priorities. In terms of prioritisation of the 2526 Capital Programme and beyond, that's a matter for the new council.
Thank you very much Kylie. And next we have, oh, sorry. Next, we would like an extension of time, please councillors. Moved by councillor McCarthy, seconded by councillor Messina, all those in favour? That's carried unanimously, so we now have another 30 minutes of question time if we need it. So the next questioner is Geraldine Wood of Reservoir. And Jodi, could you ask her a question, please?
Thank you, Mayor, through you. Geraldine has some questions in relation to KP Hardiman Reserve. Could council please provide details on the current users and community organisations that utilise the KP Hardiman Reserve facilities? And will this change once the pavilion has been upgraded?
Thank you. I'll go to Kylie for the response.
Thank you for your questions, Geraldine. La Trobe University Hockey Club are the annual tenant at KP Hardiman Reserve. With 310 participants in 20 teams, 40% of those participants identify as women and girls. Given the poor condition of the current pavilion, it has not been appropriate for others to use. The new pavilion will provide a fit-for-purpose facility tailored to meeting the gender-inclusive needs of the growing hockey club, while also providing accessible and family-friendly public amenities to support spectators and recreational park users. When completed, council will seek to activate the pavilion outside of sporting use times to provide access to community groups with compatible activities to maximise the value of council's investment in this facility.
Thank you Kylie. And the next last person we have is Aviki Tricca of Reservoir. And Jodi, would you mind asking the question?
Thank you through you, Mayor. Aviki's question is, who is responsible for mowing the lawn on nature strips in front of vacant land? People talk to me about who is mowing the grass outside empty blocks in our street, so it would be good for everybody to hear the answer to this.
Thank you very much. And for the answer, we'll go to Rachel.
Thanks, Mayor. The longest established practice, which is the case in Darabin and common across Victoria, is that owners or occupiers take responsibility for mowing nature strips in front of their property. So for a vacant block, it would be the owner. This practice keeps costs for rate payers lower. If there is a safety or a fire issue because a strip hasn't been maintained, it can be reported to council. We'll work with the owner or occupier to get it mowed. And if needed, we'll step in temporarily to ensure community safety.
Thank you, Rachel. We will now close public question time and we'll move on to submissions. So council's governance rules permit members of the public to register to address an ordinary council meeting in relation to matters listed on that agenda. Thank you to those people who've registered their intentions to do this tonight. We have three requests to make a submission this evening. So when I call your name, please approach the lectern to make your two-minute submission. And the first person we have is Serena O'Malley. So we will get her back online, please. And this is relating to item 9.2, amendment C210D, consideration of submissions following exhibition. Serena, please feel free to make your submission.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I'm speaking to 9.2. As you know, I've got quite a passionate interest in maintaining and enhancing public open space. There was a similar motion titled C186D, which took place in late 2019, or consultations on such an issue. That amendment to the planning scheme pursued an across-the-board 10% open space contribution, which was obviously a significant jump from the current sliding scale, which in some cases for a single additional lot was zero. And as you'll see in the minutes, it eventually gets up to 5% when the subdivision has five additional lots. So according to a response to a submitter on page 246 of tonight's agenda, quote, "The amendment was discontinued due to a low likelihood of success based on the methodology to date and recent panel outcomes for similar amendments." As a result, Darabin council has lost four years of open space revenue because of this misstep. Potentially millions of dollars a year that could have been used to rewild our municipality. So section 18 of the subdivision act allows council to institute an open space levy of not more than 5% upon developers as either payment or land or contribution, a combination of both. In other words, if the 2019 motion had simply raised the levy to 5%, then council's open space budget position would have been significantly improved because it would have been within the scope of the act. My concern is whether Darabin is repeating the mistakes of the past by proposing to institute a 10% open space levy specifically on the Preston Market. If the planning amendment fell over again for the same reason as previously, that would be a terrible outcome. And I would urge councillors to address this in questions to officers and/or in the debate on the motion. Further to that, it's unclear why 38 Kramer Street Preston and 102 St George's Road Preston have no open space contribution against them for the minutes. So again, I'd ask that that be debated. Thank you.
Thank you, Serena. Some very good points there and some good suggestions for questions councillors can ask. Thank you. We'll go to Karen Large for a submission on item 9.3, the climate emergency plan.
Great, thank you for the opportunity to make a short submission on item 9.3. On behalf again of Darabin Climate Action Now, or D-C-A-N as we call ourselves. D-C-A-N would like to acknowledge the overwhelming community support for council to take strong climate action, which is reflected in the Stage Two Community Engagement Report. We welcome the strengthening of the final plan in several key areas. The addition of community and business education campaigns to support Darabin households and businesses to electrify, to improve efficiency and access affordable renewable energy is particularly welcome and will be vital in supporting all of us to reduce our local emissions. We also welcome the education campaign to reduce consumption and support a circular economy. D-C-A-N strongly supports the additional advocacy roles contained in the proposed plan, which commit council to press the state and national governments for greater urgency on a range of climate actions. And we also believe that the inclusion of a monitoring and evaluation framework for each of the pillars for plans will play an important role in helping to ensure the effectiveness and success of the plan. We're disappointed, however, that our recommendations for stronger emission reduction targets has not been adopted. We note that this was a key theme raised by many others during stage two of the community engagement. There is strong scientific evidence that the targets that the plan relies upon are overly conservative and outdated. So we appreciate the promise to review the target in 2027 in line with scientific advice and community values, and we look forward to further discussion on this issue down the track. Another key theme noted in the community engagement report and shared by D-C-A-N is an ongoing concern about the level of staffing and resourcing of the plan. In February, at the February meeting, council committed unanimously to prioritise funding for the delivery of the climate emergency plan commensurate with an emergency-level response. And we're calling for greater budget transparency so that the community can have confidence that this commitment is being met. We look forward to fully supporting the implementation of the plan and congratulate all those who've been involved in its development. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Karen. And again, thank you, D-C-A-N, for your many years of service, particularly through these processes and through our last climate emergency plan. And certainly from my perspective, heard loud and clear about the budget next year. Thank you. And we'll go on to Christina Domenico for item 9.4, Property Matters, the lease at Diverse. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm the executive officer at Diverse, and I'm joined here tonight by our deputy chairperson, Ellen McNaul. Thank you, council, for your support of Diverse and the many hardly reached in our community we work with. Where people access our services and programmes is important. And with the current cost of living challenges, it's also important we can provide continued service that minimises disruption. Diverse appreciates that the report before council acknowledges our value and our effectiveness in the community and that we are seen as a priority partner. We've appreciated working with council staff to explore options and it pleased that council is seeking our feedback. To provide this feedback, we will need to work through the detail with council, such as costs associated with moving to and occupying Rosebury Avenue and options for what it does not provide, what a grant for support would include, and how council could support diverse with property matters, and what support diverse can expect beyond the proposed three-year commitment. We will also be considering if there are other options to put to council. For the community we serve here in Darabin, including our engaged and committed volunteers, students and staff, we are looking for and working towards solutions that ensure diverse can, at a minimum, maintain the current state and quality of services and programmes, where diverse and the community we work with are not disadvantaged, and that ideally can improve what we are able to deliver. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Christina. And thank you to all of our submitters this evening. We will now go to item eight petitions. Councillor says no petitions, so I'll move on to the next item. And firstly, I'll make the following statement. We do have a full agenda this evening, councillors, that we need to get through in line with the time limits in our governance rules. And I will be permitting questions of officers prior to the commencement of debate on each item. But if I think sufficient questioning has occurred, I'll exercise my right under the governance rules to limit questions and ask the debate commence. So councillors, we will go on to our item nine, consideration of reports. And the first report we have to consider is the draft Darabin housing strategy, part one and two. Do we have any questions of officers about this housing strategy item? Thank you, Stevie. Any questions? Not hearing anything, councillors. So if there's no further questions, we'll commence the debate. And I remind you, once we enter the debate, there'll be no further questions. Do we have a mover of the motion? Councillor Lawrence? And do we have a second for the motion? Councillor McCarthy? Councillor Lawrence, over to you. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Newton, for this, speaking to this motion. So this motion is actually about something that's very important and quite topical, given the housing crisis within Darabin itself and the wider debate about population and housing numbers in this city. I think the one thing I'd like to emphasise on this is that we have an existing housing strategy that feeds into our planning strategy, which are advertised and for consultation and input by community. And I know it's a very kind of old-fashioned thing to have a council talk to the community and the community to write back and surveys and outreach, et cetera. But it is very important that when we're currently getting a top-down debate about the number of houses in this city, about the future shape of the population in this city. So this report highlights that previous council position of looking at growth of 28,000 dwellings to our current around 70,000 dwellings in this city. And that housing strategy has been consulted on previously. And that planning, our local planning scheme, in fact, is a product of allowing for that growth along our transit corridors, including sites like Bell City, the junction and the Preston Market itself, where developments up to 14 stories are permitted in our current height zones. And along our transit corridors where you find a variety, five, six, eight, 10, 12-story zones along Plenty Road, High Street, where we've got trams and trains. So Darabin has, council and community have been consulted on this. There's a variety of opinions that people have about what they want on high streets. There's also a variety of opinions about what heights people want inside streets. And they're reflected in our planning scheme. I mention this because it's easy in this age of conspiracy to think that we have no control and we have no consultation. This is, this housing strategy is your control, is your consultation. There'll be a six-week consultation on this. I really urge people who are interested in livability, architecture and housing needs to have input on this. There isn't dates, exact dates, but I think it's coming up in August and September. It's outlined in the report. This is important. Councillors follow the consultation that they get from the community. There's a reason why we have our height limits and our intensification across the corridors. The reason why we fought for heritage controls in our side streets. But of course, we all know pressing needs from our families and friends to actually live here. And that is a crisis affecting many either who want to buy or who want to rent. And some people just struggling for shelter. So all those issues, I would commend the community to have your say. And I think it is an opportune time when we are coming up to an election and a new council, that we have that consultation and that debate with the community.
Thank you, Councillor Lawrence. I'll go to Councillor McCarthy, a second. You have two minutes.
Thanks, Mayor. I'd just like to start off first of all by acknowledging Councillor Lawrence's long advocacy in the housing space. And I want to reflect on my comments in the advocacy that the whole council does and has been doing for a very long time in relation to housing homelessness and the need to deliver equity as well as housing as part of the plan. Mayor and councillors, I just want to highlight, and there are two figures that Councillor Lawrence referred to, and I think it's important for us to understand. Lawrence referred to, and I think it's important for us to understand the implications of both council's own work but also the Victorian Government's housing statement, which is an ambitious plan that would see 800,000 homes across the state, including here in Darabin, 72,000 new dwellings by 2051. That is a lot of work that has to happen between now and then. And I don't think we should underestimate the level of change that will be required to deliver on that outcome. Particularly, I would also add, Mayor, the inclusion of the introduction of Preston High Street as an activity centre that would be called in. And I think it's important for us to understand the policy context here, that when a precinct of this nature and of this scope is called in by the state government, it effectively takes the planning powers out of the hands of council and puts those into someone in the hands of someone in Spring Street. Now, this is not the first time this has happened, and that is the current situation we have with the Preston Market. But what it does mean is that council is going to have to really understand what good housing looks like, what good social outcomes look like, and absolutely has to have a focus on advocating and building relationships directly into government, but also understanding that sometimes we won't agree. We won't agree with the design of a building, we won't agree with the lack of public housing or the social housing that's included. And so council's going to need to be prepared to advocate and resource that advocacy in those cases, because it won't be council making decisions on those dwellings, it'll actually be the state government. Mayor, I want to just highlight one lot more thing, and that is a big thank you to the officers for their work on this. Thank you so much.
Here, here. Thank you, Councillor McCarthy. Do we have further speakers on this item? Not hearing anything. I know we haven't had anyone in opposition, but I will close off the debate because I think this is a really important topic. I want to also pay tribute to our officers for what is an incredibly comprehensive piece of work, and I think it puts us in good stead to both advocate to state government but also look at what's in our wheelhouse as well. As Councillor McCarthy said, there is a huge ask of us from state government, so from 70,000 dwellings now to double that and add 72,000 more just in the next 25 years. That is not going to be an easy task for anyone. Something that I found really interesting in one of the reports was the difference between how renters and owners felt and what their priorities were about affordable housing, about sustainability. But the thing that came through for everyone was the importance of open and green space, which is why we are looking at that in our next topic as well. But for me, certainly, you know, as we go into the next council term, we will be looking at advocating for public housing. We need to have social and affordable housing, and we also need to push the state government further for inclusion reseeding. So we will keep up that fight. And I think too, having been through the discussions about the activity centre in Preston, I believe this council also really needs to push for investment from state government in open space, public transport, particularly around Northland, where we're expecting a very big development there. So I'll close the item there. And councillors, will put this item to the vote? All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Thank you, councillors. We'll go to 9.2, which is Amendment C210 there, the consideration of submissions following the exhibition. And councillors, do we have any questions of officers on this item? And I know we were prompted by our submitter. All very quiet. Any questions before we go to debate? Councillor Messina.
My question is, does this have to be debated this evening? And perhaps we consider putting into the next councils, into the next meeting to consider Serena's questions, please.
Can we get a response to that from Stevie or Vanessa?
Through you, Mayor. We could have the effect of delaying the consideration of the reports this evening. However, I could also attempt to answer Serena's question now.
That would be wonderful, Stevie. And I think that's a great way forward. So hopefully you remember, but it was questions about Preston Market, the 10% there, and a couple of places perhaps not having an open space allotment. So we'll go over to you.
Through you, Mayor. Thank you, Serena, for the question. I would like to clarify that the proposed amendment before council in consideration of submissions does not propose to change, add a 10% levy to Preston Market, nor does it remove the 10% levy from those specific properties at 30A Kramer Street and 102 St George's Road Preston. These changes were introduced recently by the state government, who introduced the Preston Market precinct planning controls into the scheme. And part of that development considerations was that it's a large landholding that's capable of significant, very significant development, and therefore it's justified for a higher levy to be applied to that specific site. And the two sites that are excluded from that are actually the rail sites and Victrack land that wouldn't necessarily be developing, so that's why they've been excluded from the 10% specifically, but they would default to the subdivision act, so they wouldn't provide zero contribution if they were. And I hope that clarifies things.
Thank you very much, Stevie. Have we got further questions? No. Okay, so we, oh, sorry, Councillor Lawrence, please go ahead. We do have time.
Just through you, Mayor Newton. Just if we could have an answer from the officers. Specifically, a question was raised regarding the earlier push for 10%, which followed, I think, Yara and Monash's similar ambitious open space requests. So there was a comment that in doing that, we missed out on 5% that could have automatically been gathered. So that was one question or supposition put forward. And the second was, is this submission making the same alleged mistake?
Thank you, Councillor Lawrence. I do think that's worth exploring. So we'll go to Vanessa. Thank you.
Thank you for your question, Councillor Lawrence. And through you, Mayor, you might recall in an earlier agenda paper we've brought that we've estimated that increasing this levy to a, effectively a default to 5%, we've anticipated is likely to result in an additional $2 million per year. So with hindsight and retrospect, you could extrapolate that back to the past, councillors. I will share that, as you are aware, as we worked through the more ambitious strategy, as were the other councillors, our knowledge of the broader strategic landscape concerning that and the effectiveness of going to panels significantly increased. And councillors, I can also share that we are progressively working on updating the methodology and understanding the future need of our open space going out to 2041 as background work in addition to this proposed amendment.
Thank you. And can't change the past, but hopefully we can make a good decision tonight. Councillor Lawrence, did you have further questions?
Yeah, just the second part of the question was, is that same risk in this decision that we're looking at tonight?
Thank you. I'll go to Stevie.
Through you, Mayor. So the research we've undertaken for this particular increase to the Darabin open space levy is actually based on all of the strategic work and justification that we pulled together for the proposed Amendment C186, which was subsequently deferred by council indefinitely. And the reason that we didn't proceed forward with the 10% open space levy was because it is quite a significant and dramatic shift and jump in open space levies compared to other councils around Melbourne. And with that increase in levy comes significant scrutiny. And through benefit of being able to view other panel considerations from other councils, it was determined that the work that we had done unfortunately didn't answer some crucial questions that provided that strategic justification. And if we proceeded to panel, it would not be successful, it would not be likely to be successful. So for that reason, that much higher levy was not pursued. However, we're very confident that based on the current proposal to just remove the current discounted rate to the levy, that our strategic justification would definitely stand up to scrutiny at panel.
Thank you, Stevie. Can I ask a follow-up to that one? I think it was in the report, but no council has achieved a 10% levy. Is that, is that right?
Yes, through you, Mayor. We can't say for sure, we'd have to take that question on notice, but from memory, we've only heard of around the 8% mark.
Thank you very much. Have we got further questions? Councillor Lawrence?
Yes, sorry, just a supplementary question. This previous submission on open space levies and this current one, I assume is based on horizontal subdivisions that occur inside streets and multi-story sites that you've been talking about in Preston. What's the impact of buy and lease developments when they come to the city of Darabin? I don't know if they have come yet, but, you know, in the kind of preferred 50-storey, 40-storey format of development that's preferred by the state government, what would be the impact of this mechanism? Would it be negated?
Thanks, Councillor Lawrence. Do you mean build to rent? Yes. Build to rent.
Thanks for the question, councillor. Through you, Mayor. Yeah, look, build to rent has been identified as a, as a risk to open space revenue because it doesn't require subdivision. So the estimated increase in revenue at around the two to two and a half million mark per annum that has been presented in the report is, it doesn't take into account potential uplift in build to rent instances in the future. So to the extent that they are occurring at an increased rate, it will affect future levy revenue.
Thank you, Hamish. Councillor Lawrence?
Sorry to labour the point. Just a supplementary on that. Given that this process that we're talking about today is about moving towards a ministerial planning independent panel process, if the council were to adopt this, we begin a process that looks at, you know, a sort of moderate locking in of open space levy, would the council be in a position to offer other arguments around build to rent if they emerge during the panel process? Or does that have to be outlined prior?
Thank you. I'll go to, I believe, Stevie has the microphone.
Thank you, Councillor Lawrence. And through you, Mayor. I'll initially respond, Councillor Lawrence, by sharing that we would see that that's principally an advocacy matter for us to work across all of the councils and of course, the state government in addressing what could potentially be a shortfall to support our growing community and their open space needs. And we have started that dialogue, councillor, and that will be a very important matter for all of us to work collaboratively on as we seek to achieve the housing and infrastructure we need for our future growth.
Thank you, Stevie. Would you like to add to that response?
I would. Through you, Mayor. Thank you for the question. Unfortunately, the mechanism is beyond council's control for the purposes of amending the Darabin planning scheme. The particular provisions that control or don't apply the levy to build to rent properties is really through both the Planning and Environment Act and the way the subdivision act is called in. So it's quite significant legislative reform, but it's something that we've definitely raised with the state government before as a key gap as our city grows into the future. And we're planning to include it in our planned Victoria advocacy for planning reform that will come to council in August.
Thank you, Stevie. Councillor Lawrence, any further questions? You've got what you need. Thank you. I'm not seeing any other hands, so we'll close the questions and we'll commence the debate. And I remind you, once we enter the debate, there'll be no further questions. Do we have a mover of the motion? Councillor McCarthy? Do we have a secondary? Councillor Rennie? Councillor McCarthy, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you also, councillors, for your questions and the interest in this. Also, thank you also to, thank you to Serena for her questions and advocacy and interest in this long-running matter. Councillors, it is a little bit frustrating that this is the way in which we actually can secure contributions to open space by having to go through what I believe is actually unnecessarily expensive, cumbersome, time-consuming and ultimately often adversarial process to secure what should actually be built into the system. There was a time around in the last decade when in fact, the state government, under a previous term, was looking at a statewide open space contribution scheme that would have seen all councils automatically receive funding equivalent to what is required as a matter of course, not having to go into the bidding war that we have to undertake at the moment. I say that because not every single council has an open space contribution scheme. Darabin has had one for a number of years. It is woefully inadequate. That is not the fault or failure of any councillor or officer or our community. It is a function of the system that we deal with, which is one of incremental increases in open space contributions. So I hope one day, councillors, that we do have a statewide open space levy and councils don't have to undertake this process. In saying that, we are at the stage now where we are ready to submit to the Minister for Planning for both the proposed amendment and also the seven submissions that were received, which were a mixture of support, opposition and neutrality. The amount that's proposed to increase to is 5%. That is in line with the legislation. It is not where we would hope it should be because it does not address what is both a historical and also likely future deficit in open space. Open space levies can be contributed towards the upgrade and improvement of existing open space or purchasing open space, as this council has done in previous years, including the purchase of Rutheran Primary School and also part of Lakeside Secondary College, securing the future of part of the Mary Creek Path and also a fantastic new park, which Serena O'Malley, one of our submitters, was being instrumental in helping advocate for as well. So thank you, Serena. I do want to note that, that we are actually facing a critical shortage of open space in Melbourne, and SGS Economics suggests that it could be as much as 25% deficit in open space over the next 20 years. So we need the funding to secure what is available and to improve what already exists. Mayor, I recommend the resolution that we have, or recommendation we have in front of us. It will go to an independent panel, should the minister choose to appoint one, and hopefully it'll come back to this council without haste and so we can actually get on with charging what is currently before us. And hopefully one day we see the increase that should be in relation to open space contributions. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Councillor McCarthy. I'll go to Councillor Rennie as secondary. You have two minutes.
Mayor, it's an incredibly important issue, but I actually think Councillor McCarthy has covered it extremely well. I'd just like to thank the staff who have done the work to get us to this stage and hope that the process from here will be expedited by the quick appointment of a panel by the minister. Thank you.
Here, here. Thank you, Councillor Rennie. Do we have any further speakers on the amendment? No. Okay, we'll go to the vote for that item. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Thank you, councillors. The next report we have to consider this evening is the Climate Emergency Plan. I have an amendment I'd like to make to this plan, so I'm going to ask Councillor Lawrence, the deputy mayor, to step into the chair.
Hello. Welcome to the community at home and the gallery attendees and councillors and officers tonight. So we are now moving on to item Climate Emergency Plan, Stage Two, Consultation of Feedback and Proposed Final Plan, item 9.3. So councillors, do we have any questions of the officers regarding this item? Yes, Councillor Messina?
Thank you. Through you, Deputy Mayor. I'd like to address how the new framework in terms of the economic development, how that consultation's going to be embedded in terms of feedback through this plan.
If we could just have a response from the relevant officer? I'm not sure who's. Ellen?
Great. Thanks for the question, Councillor Messina. Through you, acting chair. The economic development The economic development framework will be progressed through the Economic Development Team and be, um, uh, I suppose delivered through the Climate Emergency Plan. I don't know if that's helpful.
Through you Deputy Mayor, I might just add the economic development framework is currently being developed and the Economic Development Team have been working with and are making sure that that framework is informed by the Climate Emergency Plan that council passes tonight. Certainly, I believe one of the actions in the plan is to make sure that within the economic framework, that climate is, is captured within that. And certainly in the next few weeks, we'll be bringing to councillor briefing the, the first draft of that framework.
Okay, is there any other questions from councillors regarding this? Okay, I just need to fill in one little mistake there. I should also acknowledge the submission by D Can on this. It was a detailed submission, obviously not just given tonight in the brief speaking time you had, but throughout the whole process, and thank you for that. So do I have a mover on the motion? Councilor McCarthy? And the seconded, Councilor Rennie? Council McCarthy?
Thank you, Acting Chair, Acting, Deputy Chair. I would acknowledge before I get into the report, just to acknowledge that I know there are some amendments that councillors would like to put forward in relation to this item, and I look forward to hearing those. And for the ones that I've seen so far, more than happy to incorporate those. So I would welcome councillors to bring those up once I've finished the opening remarks. But I'd just like to start off by acknowledging and thanking all of the people that have been involved in bringing this together, both our officers, some of whom are here this evening, people such as Karen, who've joined us here from D Can, and the Climate Emergency Darabin Advisory Committee, who have met over many, many nights, over many, many years now to get us to this stage. It is not an easy thing to get right, and I feel that we are incredibly close and about as right as you can get in the context of all the constraints and challenges that organisations like Darabin face, to get a plan which does really important things. And one is to recognise what has happened to date, which is some really important work dating all the way back, not just to our Climate Emergency Declaration in 2016 and the new plan, which was initiated in 2017, but I think decades' worth of work on climate action by our community and council's support for that. And a lot of the things that are picked up in both the plan and also I think the feedback from community reflect that focus on community action, that focus on the partnership between council and community, and also the importance of working locally, working regionally, working at the state level, the national level, and even in some cases, as part of international advocacy. Because so many of the challenges that we face here in the city of Darabin are actually beyond our immediate control. The levers don't exist within our power structure, they don't exist within our resources, and so we need to work collaboratively. Councillors, I would just want to highlight that there has been some really great feedback that's come through. I think most of it has either found its way into incorporated into changes and in many cases, has strengthened the work. One thing that sits at the very centre of this plan though, and I think it would be dear to the hearts of all councillors, is the focus on First Nations, First Nations justice, caring for country, and that deep and enduring sense of listening before talking and acting. And one of the problems that we've had, I think, in, not just in the way in which decision-making has occurred in relation to our industrial society, but also in how we respond to things like climate, is that we have not put caring for country at the centre of that work, and that's what this plan does. And that's why it is a really important plan that I hope all councillors will support. I want to thank everyone that's made a contribution to date, plus all the submissions, people that have been involved in the consultations through both rounds, but critically are also going to be part of the work that comes ahead, Chair. And one of the things that I also want to just finish on, as I see the last few months out of this term, is that this sets us up for now until 2030, and it is another critical decade, as they say, and critical years ahead. So thank you, everyone, for your contributions. And please, councillors, I hope you support it.
Council McCarthy, and now if we could hear from the seconder of the motion, Councilor Rennie.
Thanks, Chair, I reserve my rights, thank you.
Council Lawrence, can I propose an amendment, please?
Just, um, I will take the amendment just in a moment because I need to, in this next step, under our meeting rules, invite other councillors who wish to speak to the motion first, before I take the amendment. Any other councillors who wish to speak to this, um, motions? 9.3, item 9.3. Council Hannan?
Yes, um, thanks Deputy Mayor. I'm really excited to be talking in favour of this, uh, of this item tonight. It's, it's been a long time coming, and it's, it's a huge amount of work that both staff and the community have put in, as Councilor McCarthy has said. So a big thanks to our, to our staff and all the work that they've done in putting this together. And to community members, so over many years, as, as Council McCarthy said, including D Can, Darabin Climate Action Now, and others who've, who've really been pushing the debate, not just here in Darabin, but nationally. I'm very proud of Darabin's role, firstly, to declare a climate emergency, and then to be one of the first local governments to move a climate emergency plan. And now to be moving our second plan. And I want to just make the point that this is not just about advocacy positions, as important as that is. This is about getting real results for our community. And we've seen that through the first plan, Darabin had a reduction in emissions by 71%, which was way ahead of the target of 41, 45% reduction. And that, uh, you know, many other things, for example, the VCO collaboration, which was the largest ever procurement of clean energy by councils in Australia, the building of clean energy facilities, and the Solar Savers Programme, which has now helped over 2,200 residents focusing on those with low incomes. So these are all practical things that make a real difference in our community, as well as addressing the global crisis that we face with the temperatures heating up every year. And I just wanted, I could, I could go on. There's, there's a huge amount in this report, which I would encourage people to read, but I just wanted to end on a quote from Auntie Di Kerr, a traditional owner and elder who's, who sets out the start of this report, that first and foremost, we have to understand Mother Earth. Earth is our mother, the waterways her veins. They're sick because we're not looking after her. That's why we're seeing all these disasters. We need to care for country every day. Unless we journey, it won't work. We have to respect each other and show respect. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Hannan. Now, um, Mayor, you, you had some amendments.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Lawrence and Current Chair. It's a bit strange, um, sitting in this chair. But I do have a few amendments, and I believe governance will be able to get them up on screen.
So if we could see them now?
That's the amendments. So it's at 1A, at 2 and at 3. And this also incorporates some suggestions from Councilor Messina and also from Councilor Hannan.
So just give a few minutes. We don't have any councillors online, do we, at the moment? So we just, the current present councillors, if they haven't already received this, can go through and digest this. Hopefully it can also be seen online by people at home, but certainly it will be eventually published if it is passed. So there will be a chance for the community to see this in detail later. So do the mover and seconder accept those amendments?
Uh, yes, happy to accept all of those amendments as listed on screen.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, also happy.
Thank you for that. Now, just before, they have been now incorporated into substantial motion, so we won't be having a debate about, for people at home, we won't be having a debate about the amendments. They've been incorporated to the substantive motion. Now, just return to councillors because we had the second.
Can I speak to the substantive?
To the motion?
Thank you.
Substantive motion?
Yes, thank you. It's also, I feel like it's a while since I was debating. Firstly, I'd like to thank Vanessa, Ellen, Michelle and everyone else through the whole council who's worked on this plan. It's really amazing to get here for our second-ever climate emergency strategy after we were the first in the world to deliver one back in, I think, 2017. For me, I do particularly want to speak about the amendments that are now part of the substantive motion. So I've got a couple of heroes like Mayor Anne Hidalgo from Paris and Sadiq Khan from London, who by really, really, really promoting active transport have done incredible things in their cities. I listened to an interview with Sadiq Khan recently where he talked about a little girl that had been the first one to have her death related to air pollution and how long it was supposed to take for air pollution to reduce in London. But he was able to do that in just a few years and get it under normal standards because of the action that Mayor and the City of London took. So for me, going fast with our integrated transport and land use strategy and really rapidly moving to walking, cycling and public transport and wheeling is very important to our community, I think is incredibly important. And I'm really glad that those amendments have been included. We are also going to be doing a trial of e-scooters and e-bikes, which I think is one of the first steps towards making Darabin a more active transport-friendly place. We are looking at doing that first on the border between Yarra and Darabin because that's where people can hire e-scooters and e-bikes now. And that's certainly where I see a lot of e-scooters waiting at the border of Yarra. I really, I really appreciate Councilor Messina's contributions here about adding consultation with the business community. We have some incredibly leading businesses in Darabin such as Elk, Nancy Bird, Three Ravens, Sunny Electronics, that our Sustainable Darabin team has focused on already, who are doing amazing things. I'm probably running out of time, but I think for me, one of the best things that we've done in the last plan is NARC, where the first gas-free aquatic indoor-outdoor centre in all of Australia. I think we can all be very proud of that as a community, and I think it's an absolutely wonderful facility. So onwards and upwards, looking forward to the next years ahead.
Okay, and I note, the mayor just went over time a bit. And just, so if I can go to Councilor Demetriadis?
Thank you, Acting Chair. I actually have an amendment, and I just wanted to say this particular amendment that's up on the screen hasn't actually been circulated to all councillors. I circulated it about half an hour ago after D Can's submission.
Thanks, Councilor Demetriadis. A point of order has been circulated to all councillors by email.
So B, point B? Because I can't see it, sorry.
Point B, yes, I can recirculate it if that's helpful.
It certainly hasn't been circulated. Can?
Yeah, so we're not having a point of order. If you can continue to speak to your amendment.
Oh, sorry, my amendment's not up on the screen. And, but I did want to clarify that that particular point isn't, uh, it's actually my amendment, and the further amendment hasn't been circulated, that particular amendment hasn't been circulated to all councillors. So I just circulated it and I got advice from Vanessa about it. Thank you. Oh, um, I wanted to include, so just whatever was accepted previously, along with A and B as well in addition. And that's just going along with what D Can's submission had said. So it's whatever the mover and seconder have already accepted in addition to these two points, which follow on from D Can's.
Excuse me, Councilor Lynn. Through you, Mayor. I think A has already been dealt with in the amendment. So I think Council Demetriadis, yes, she did circulate it, I certainly received it. Perhaps she could just add point B as your amendment, given A's already in there.
Sorry, I just wanted to reiterate, it hasn't actually been circulated to all councillors. Point B was not circulated to all councillors. And I'd like to move it as an amendment. Oh, which also raises the point that the previous motion, we'd need to remove point B from that one because it wasn't circulated to all councillors.
I, I think that's right.
It certainly is. Sorry, what about the mayor's point that she's raised something that hasn't been circulated to all councillors?
It's not in the governance rules.
I've just spoken to the general manager of the government, the interim manager. She just said that it has to.
Point of order, the amendment has been circulated to all councillors.
So councillors, um, we might take a break for five minutes. And if you can, uh, if Councilor Demetriadis can work with the officers so that we have a presentation of the additional wording for point A and the additional point of point B, so we can have some clarity on the debate. And then we can submit that to the mover and seconder and proceed as per our meeting guidelines. So if we can all have a break for five minutes, and those who need to do the extra work can do the extra work. Yep. Now councillors, we are just going to move through here. I'm not going to take many points of order, and I won't be ignoring them because the inclusion of debates is more important than the points of order or sequences that led us to here. This is a very important issue for our whole community, and not just activists, but everyone at home who takes great steps to reduce their waste and change their energy and transport, transport uses. So, um, we are now, we have had substantive amendments that were, were gathered from, feedback from councillors. And I would acknowledge that there was feedback from Council Emily Demetriadis, Councilor Demetriadis, in regards to point A. But we are now going to have the second amendment in this examined, which is some additional words to point A from Councilor Demetriadis and some extra point A, B rather. So we're going to deal with that. I'm going to deal with amendments one at a time only, and we're going to move that, that we get to a point where we have a substantive motion that we can put, okay? So officers, if we could have the actual wording, additional wording and the additional point, if there is any additional wording. And now if I could just hear from the mayor, you, please?
Thank you, Council Lawrence. I would like to clarify that Councilor Demetriadis did circulate a suggestion that is now here under 1B, which I then moved as an amendment. And now the rest of that is being moved as a second amendment.
I'll just give councillors a minute to take all that in. Council Demetriadis, does that reflect the intent of your amendment?
Uh, yes, it was initially all of point B and C. Yes, it was initially all of point B and C, but, yep, that's right.
Okay, now I'm just going to ask from the mover and second if that amendment is acceptable to the mover and second of the substantive motion?
Yes, it's, I just would, just to be clear, I think that point C should say, where it says ensure the climate decision-making principles, I think it actually should be climate emergency decision-making principles. I would just ask officers to clarify just so we've got the wording right, because once this is adopted, if we can just have clarity and if that's the case, I'm happy to accept it.
So, and is this amendment acceptable to the second?
Yes.
Thank you councillor Rennie. So that amendment is now, that amendment now has been part of the substantial motion. Now, we were going through debates, so I've still got councillors haven't spoken to the substantive motion, so councillor Demetriadis if you could speak. And I certainly haven't forgotten that the second still hasn't spoken yet.
Thank you, chair. Firstly, I wanted to thank everyone who participated in the consultation process for the climate emergency plan and also to the Climate Emergency Advisory Committee who have long worked hard on this particular project and also to DECAN, Darabat Climate Action Now, for continuing to provide feedback and for pushing council to take stronger climate action. I hear your disappointment about not having stronger emissions target reductions and the need for greater funding and budget allocations in this area. And that's why I raised this amendment in response to your submissions and the questions of many residents in Darabat. And I'm really glad that the mover and the second have accepted this amendment so that the Community Resilience Action 3.161 is amended, so that it reaches 5,000 residents annually and that the climate decision, the climate emergency decision-making principles are included in the final plan. I just wanted to note on that on page 18 of the climate emergency plan, we state that to meet our targets of towards zero emissions by 2030, we need to switch 3,700 homes, 374 businesses and 6,300 cars from fossil fuels to renewable energy every year. And therefore it would only seem appropriate for council to reach 5,000 residents every year and deliver education and capacity building campaigns on energy literacy and efficiency, food resilience and water saving. So I'd like to thank everyone for accepting this amendment and let's keep up the good work. Thanks.
And councillor Messina?
Yes, sorry, through you, acting chair, I'm just wondering if we could see the whole of the, yeah, because I just wanted to make sure, because I do have, when I foreshadow that I have an amendment that I hope the second and the mover will approve.
Okay, thank you. So we could just scroll through that?
Thank you. Sorry, I thought, I'm, sorry, I'm foreshadowing an amendment based on the amendment that the mayor's going to be speaking to, so I'll be following the mayor.
I've spoken to the standard because the amendment was accepted.
Right, sorry, I'll just wait for the officer just to address one moment, please.
So just.
Just the item number, Vanessa.
Just to let you know where we're at, in my perception, we've accepted two amendments as a substantive motion, but our rules allow for a number of amendments and so you'll foreshadow that you've got amendment, so this is going to be the third amendment that we're going to consider.
I'm just circulating that now. It is in addition to one C. Develop a scoping. Oh, sorry, my. Develop a scoping study on food resilience and security to include addressing food waste and banning genetically modified food.
Happy to second.
Chair, if I might ask a question about that, given its new content, please?
Yep. So. So councillor Rennie, if you know the subject matter, which there's been some extra items put in there, did you want to ask a question to the officers regarding this foreshadowed amendment?
I might just wait to see it before I ask the question, so I could, I can ask one question well rather than a series. Thank you. Thank you, chair. Is it a good time to ask my question?
Yes, if you could ask any questions regarding this amendment that we're about to consider.
Thank you. If I could ask the team what the resource implications of this are and whether it is likely to lessen the effort available for any other initiative?
Thank you for the question councillor Rennie, through you deputy mayor. The scoping study on food resilience is currently scoped to include opportunities for value-driven urban agriculture initiatives and sustainable food-related enterprises, including the consideration of addressing food waste and banning genetically modified food, isn't expected to have significant impact on the scoping study, budget requirement, as we return it to council for consideration.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, if I could ask the mover and the second if this amendment, this third amendment is acceptable to the mover and the second of the substantive motion?
Happy to accept it.
Yes, happy to accept it.
Thank you councillors. Now, we now have a substantive motion that incorporates three points. I believe that everyone has spoken to the substantive motion? No? Councillor Messina, if you'd like to address the substantive motion?
Thank you, thank you, thank you to the mover and the second and the mayor and councillor Demetriadis and also Karen in the chamber. I first began this council and very, very infancy, I was an infant, I knew nothing about climate emergency, but I remember that date in December 2016, councillor, it was actually the ex-mayor Kim La Surf and councillor McCarthy and we had this discussion. So I came in an infant, I think I've moved a few steps since then, but even an infant can look around what's happening around in the world today, when you've got mother earth and there's floods and there's heatwaves and there's volcanic eruptions. Mother earth is roaring and I think the next economic, and we're currently in economic crisis, but I think we need to look at our food and food scarcity and water is going to be the next crisis that I think is going to happen worldwide. And that's why I've put in this particular amendment. I'd love to see some, something in there about bees because we need bees for good, good food production. I remember just this week looking through and hearing the news about what is happening with our agriculture and our farmers and how they are struggling dealing with the climate and how they're struggling with food production. I don't know what the future's going to hold with natural, good, wholesome foods. Perhaps we need to do it all in our own backyard, but I think that moving forward, this is an amazing amendment and I want to thank the staff for bringing us along the journey as well as councillors and our community because some of us didn't know anything about it, but we've been educated and taken a few steps and it's been quite a long process, but it's been an educational project, process. So I look, I want to thank everybody who's included some of us little infants along that journey. So I look forward to what the community have to offer moving forward in terms of the changes we're going to make. To do a great change and transformational change, you need to educate, bring people along the journey, you need to be transparent and inclusive and I think this is what this does and I want to thank the staff who have put this, spent many, many hours to address this, so, but I'm really passionate about climate in terms of climate justice. That is going to be huge. I know, for example, there are many aged and those most vulnerable that are not turning on heaters.
Councillor Messina.
Have I gone over the time?
You've just gone over time because you're speaking to amendment, so you only had
Okay, sorry.
A short amount of time.
Okay, I'm sorry.
If I could bring that to an end?
Okay, thank you.
So councillors, just before I put that to a vote, I'll just say briefly, thank you all the activists and the community activists and can we hear from the second?
Thank you councillor Lawrence. For the almost eight years that I've been on council, it's been clear to me every single day of that time that there is no greater challenge facing not just our municipality but our planet than the climate emergency, such that almost nothing else actually really matters if we adopt a long-term view and think about the legacy that we're leaving for our children and our grandchildren. And I think we've had leadership in Darabat for a long time that has held this up in front of us and made it impossible to ignore. And so I take my hat off first and foremost to those climate leaders like Philip Sutton, who was with us in the early days, and our friends at DECAN and others who made sure that this was not something our council would ignore, because what we know in this space is that where we go, others follow. And that's one of the reasons why it's so important for us to do this leadership piece and to maintain our commitment to the climate emergency. And I think that our, our thinking over the last eight years has evolved. I think we have become more sophisticated and the pillars of our new plan, I believe, are really solid and they ground us in caring for country first and foremost, but also in acknowledging, thinking about what zero emissions Darabat looks like and how we achieve that, not in a kind of abstract sense, but in a real everyday sense, which is actually much harder than it sounds. And then also undertaking the community resilience piece because climate change is already here, the climate crisis is already here and people in our municipality are already experiencing the impacts and people are already dying and people are already experiencing food insecurity and energy insecurity. And we need to do that social justice work as well because no one should be left behind in the way we respond to this. And finally, innovation and leadership is so important because I think we saw from the power purchase agreement that Darabat council led and that signed up more than half of Victoria's councils, that we have capacity to have reach and impact beyond the borders of our little municipality because the climate crisis knows no borders and there's no one who won't be impacted. So I really commend everyone who's been involved in this piece of work, particularly the staff and community members. It's been a privilege to be on the Climate Emergency Darabat Committee for my Taiwan Council and I look forward to our unanimous vote tonight.
Okay, thank you councillor Rennie, thank you councillors. I'll just say a few words quickly, whether or not that will be my second breach of meeting rules tonight. I'll leave for the experts at home to judge. But we, Darabat obviously is, council is elected by 66% of two parties with a commitment to climate change action. Darabat is also formerly the city of Northcote and Preston that I believe led recycling in Melbourne. So, and obviously we're famous for many climate activists here from this city now. But of course, there is the huge silent majority who actually change their lifestyles, changing their kitchens, changing their homes, and that goes on regardless of what happens in Canberra. And that is why climate, taking action on the climate emergency is council business and it is Darabat community business. So I'd like to put the motion, the substantive motion with the three amendments to the chamber. That's carried unanimously. Now I'd like to invite the mayor back to bring some order to this meeting.
Councillors, I'd like to thank you, particularly to the deputy mayor councillor Lawrence for handling that item. I wasn't expecting to be stepping up, but there I was. So we're going to 9.4, property matters, the lease of diverse at 285 to 287 High Street, Preston. Have we got questions of the officers regarding this item? No questions? Okay, so we'll commence the debate and we, just noting we do have an alternative officer recommendation and I remind you that once we enter the debate, there'll be no further questions. Do I have a mover of the motion? Councillor Hammond, are you moving the alternative officer's recommendation?
Yes, please.
Or amended office, yes, thank you. And do we have a second? Councillor Messina? Councillor Hammond, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you mayor. So this, the purpose of this motion is to consider options for council to continue with support for Darabat Information Volunteer and Resource Centre, Diverse, which has come about because the, the, the location where they, of the current leases, the owner has has said their intention to sell, so we need to find another solution. I'd like to thank very much Diverse executive officer Christina Dippenico and deputy chair Alan McNort for their submission tonight and to. Alan McNort, for their submission tonight. And to Diverse for their fantastic work in the community over many years. And to Darabben officers for, for their work to, to work with Diverse, try to find a solution to this situation. So just briefly, the council currently rents the space on a commercial basis, which is a bit unusual for council to do that. And then, and then we provide the lease to Diverse. And, and, and so going forward, I understand it was due to go to auction today. Well, let that, auction yesterday over the, over the weekend, sorry. That process will play out. But either way, council has, has principles to balance on, on issues such as this. Firstly, it's about trying to continue and get the most in terms of community benefit. Through partnering with organisations such as Diverse who deliver valuable services for our community. And secondly, as the steward of, of the assets and resources that, that we are responsible for on behalf of the whole community. And you know, any decision we make on one location or one organisation, there's, there's an opportunity cost, there's, there's other things that could be done with that money. So we need to keep that in mind. But look, Diverse has, has for a long time delivered valuable services to the community. There's, there's no doubt of their, that they will continue to be an ongoing priority partner for council with their strong community connections and strong alignment to the, to the values and strategic plan of, of Darabben council. To put it simply, they, they do what we would like to do and often do it better and more efficiently than we could do it. They do an amazing job. And I think the amendments that have been made here by officers just really go to show that we are only talking about a, about a, a property matter here. We're not talking about broad support and we're, you know, trying to give that statement as much as possible. And to give as much certainty as possible within, within the options that we have. And basically, there's an option to, to use another council site for, for three years or a part thereof, or to provide a grant for the same equivalent amount. But actually, we're not making this decision tonight. We're, we're putting those options out there to go back to Diverse to be able to take to their board and, and engage in, in meaningful consultation to work through to a solution. So on that basis, I commend it. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hannon. Now, go to councillor Messina, a secondor.
Thank you. I just want to acknowledge the deputy chair and the CEO. I just, I, I've been to Diverse many times and I know the extraordinary work that they do. But I want to take a moment to reflect a drive by two weeks ago. And I drove by and I've never seen so many people standing in line, waiting, waiting for the simple things that we take life for granted. And I drove past and I parked my car. And I thought this is not just a reflection of what's happening today only in Darabben, but it's happening around the world. And it takes patience, dedication and love and passion to do what you do. And I just want to thank you for the difference that you make in our community. And there are people that don't have those basic things that they need, but you deliver. So thank you.
Thank you councillor Messina. I do share those sentiments as well. Do we have further speakers to this item? Councillor Lawrence?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Newton. Yes, I'd like to fully support this motion that's been put forward by my fellow councillors. The provision of material aid is through Diverse and through other organisations in this city. And I won't start listing all of them because I will forget some of them. Is vital cog in the cost of living crisis. So the cost of living crisis has been delivered to us by state governments giving up the regulation of utilities to the central government and our central government in Canberra being obsessed with 1980s economics. So we are having people forced to look for food because of utility and cost and rent and mortgage payments. So there's a range of ways people supply that food. Diverse has a massive volunteer base and has a customer base. And post-COVID, unfortunately, in this current economic crisis, this credit squeeze, donations have dried up for the not-for-profits who are doing this material aid. Myself have been involved in distributing $400,000 worth of clothes through Sariscare in this community. But these others who are doing the food banks across the country, and Diverse is one of those, council does need to be there because this is actually supplementing the father of state and federal governments.
Thank you councillor Lawrence. Any further speakers? No. I'll just close off by saying we do support Diverse as much as we can. I know this is a challenging time with the potential sale of the High Street Preston site. The thing that struck me when I visited recently was the aspect where you get people in the door, however they come through the door, but then you empower people to help themselves as well. And I was so impressed by the mentality that you have, but also agree with councillor Messina that I'm certainly seeing that increase in need. And we do hope that we can support you over the next three years and beyond. So thank you so much for all you do every single day. And we'll close the debate there. Councillors, all those in favour of this item? That's carried unanimously. Thank you councillors. And we'll go to 9.5, which is the Transport and Infrastructure Net Zero Roadmap, our council submission. Do we have any questions of the officers on this item? No questions? Okay, councillors, do we have a mover of this motion? Councillor McCarthy? Do we have a secondor? Councillor Rennie? Councillor McCarthy, you have three minutes to speak to the motion.
Thank you, mayor. I'd like to start off, of course, by thanking our officers for their preparation of our submission. This is not the only submission that you'll see coming from this part of the world. I'm aware that other councils, the neighbouring councils and as well, of course, the Northern Alliance for Greenhouse Action, which I'm, the deputy chair of, has also made a submission. I'm pleased to say that the councils in our region are speaking with one voice and speaking strongly. And in fact, the things that you'll see in our submission are reflected by councils across our region. So I think it's really important that we, we recognise that because there are going to be a number of submissions made to this particular process from across the country. And when it comes to what's being said in the northern suburbs of Melbourne, we are absolutely speaking with one voice. Mayor, probably just to highlight the importance of both our submission and the importance of this issue, as councillors would have seen from the report, transport currently represents 21% of national emissions. This is part of the really important work that's being done by the federal government through the Net Zero Authority. These are sector plans that are being developed. They have been developed throughout the year. They're almost at the final stage and the transport sector plan is one of the very final ones to come into being. Mayor, what I would also highlight is probably what is ahead, which is that the, the work of the, of the, the federal government actually tells us something else which is of great significance, which is that not only is 21% of our national emissions coming from road-based transport, sorry, 20, from, from transport, but 60% is from road-based transport. But in fact, by 2030, transport-related emissions will be the largest component of emissions in this country. That is huge. And I, I say that because transport-related emissions have grown significantly over the last 20 years. They will continue to grow. We continue to invest an enormous amount as a country in moving things around and in people moving around. Mobility is a critical component of that. And we absolutely need a pathway, as is outlined in our submission, to reducing emissions, particularly for road-based transport, but also for other transport sectors such as heavy emissions. And of course, looking at that reduction in air-based movement as well. Mayor, without going through everything in our submission, I want to just highlight a couple of key elements that council has called for. Probably the, the critical one being that council is asking for, I think, a significant shift in the way we think about how we count, what, how we count and what we count. The, the key things that I've mentioned before, light vehicles and heavy vehicles and rail. Rail represents a significant way for us to reduce emissions overall, the electrification of the rail system, the move away from road-based transport is important. And probably the critical thing is as we start to see a change to electric vehicles on roads, we also need to see the infrastructure to support that, mayor. I'd like to thank once again our officers for their work and I'd like to ask and encourage all councillors to support this unanimously.
Well said councillor McCarthy. I'll go to your councillor Rennie, a secondor.
Thank you, mayor. It's a great night to consider this submission because it ties in so nicely with the climate emergency plan that we've just talked about. And councillor McCarthy has done a great job, so I'll keep it very brief. I'd like to thank the staff who've been involved in this. And importantly, I think, to note that the philosophy underpinning this is really significant and that is avoid, shift, improve. So the first thing we need to do if we're going to reduce transport emissions is actually avoid use of transport forms that create emissions. It's not enough to say, let's improve fuel efficiency of polluting cars. You know, that, that's the sort of third in, in that hierarchy of ways to improve things. And so, you know, we know that here in Darabben, people can avoid transport emissions by getting out of petrol-powered vehicles. They can get out of petrol-powered vehicles in any number of ways, which include taking trains and trams, micro mobility, which is something we talked about earlier, walking or switching to electric vehicles. We also need to think about the embodied emissions that are within transport. So what are the emissions that actually go to creating whatever type of vehicle, no matter how clean, and putting that on our roads? But we can't do this alone in Darabben. We know that actually the drives of these emissions sit with the federal government and state government to actually make the changes. And that's why this piece of advocacy is so important. I commend it to everyone and I look forward to an effective response from the decision-makers at a federal government level. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Rennie. Have we got further speakers to this item? Not seeing any. We'll go to the vote. All those in favour, that's carried unanimously. Thank you councillors. We'll go to 9.6, the governance report for July 2024. Do we have any questions of officers regarding this item? No questions? Then councillors, we'll commence the debate. And I remind you, once we enter the debate, there'll be no further questions. Do we have a mover for the governance report? Shall I encourage councillor Hannon? And do we have a secondor for their governance report, councillor? Councillor Hannon, would you like to speak to the governance report?
Thank you, mayor. So as per every council meeting, there's a number of items just to be transparent with our community about that relate to the governance of this council, including regular reports there. There are a couple of substantive items I wanted to mention. One is the, the payment amounts for mayors and councillors. Obviously, this is, there's, we all have an interest in, in setting payment amounts for ourselves. But to be transparent with the community, these are not, these, these amounts are not set by council. These are set at a state level. And there's a basically a standard amount depending on the type of council and it's just up to each council to endorse that. We don't really have a choice. I mean, we, we could choose not to do this, but this, this is basically just falling in line with the state levels. So on that basis, I'm happy to accept that. And the, there is a reschedule of a meeting there to note. And one item, which is just not up on the screen, but is the appointment of, reapportment of the chair of the Audit Risk Committee, Lisa Tripodi. We've, we heard from question that this is the second time with this particular formation of the committee and therefore within the government's rules. And I just wanted to make a note that I've been on, on the committee for, this is my third year now in that committee. And Lisa's done a fantastic job as chair, as well as, we've, we've been really lucky to have some great independent members. I think we're in really good hands. She brings great experience from the sector, including experience from other councils, which is her own professional experience and provides invaluable feedback to get the most out of that committee and really help to perform its role. So I'm very happy to support and endorse that reapportment. And I'll leave that there. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hannon and fully agree with your comments on Lisa Tripodi. She's been a wonderful chair of the Audit Risk Committee. And I'll go to councillor Rennie for your debate as secondor.
Thank you, mayor. Very briefly, just for the planning junkies among us. I think it's always really interesting to look at Appendix F, which is the summary of VCAT decisions. And this month, that's particularly relevant because it gives a summary of the annual performance of council's planning decisions. And I think it highlights the difficulty that council has achieving everything we seek to achieve in planning in terms of good outcomes because our officers' decisions when they denied planning applications were only fully upheld in about half of the cases. And that means that VCAT is not really reflecting the, the views and expertise that we go in there for. We're not objecting as a council to planning applications for the sake of it. We object because there are deep flaws in what's being proposed and because we are concerned about the future amenity of dwellings that are being built today. So I think that is worth the community looking at and understanding the challenges in front of this council as we seek to make sure that all dwellings built today are fit for purpose tomorrow.
Thank you councillor Rennie. Do we have any further speakers on the governance report? No, I'll put that straight to the vote. All those in favour, that's carried unanimously. And we'll next go on to contract C to 2024-27, the truck purchased via local buy and Mav. So do we have any questions about the truck contract? Not seeing any, so we will commence the debate. And I remind you that once we enter the debate, there'll be no further questions. Do we have a mover of this motion, councillor Hannon? Do we have a secondor? Councillor Rennie? Councillor Hannon, please, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you, mayor. Look, I'll keep this pretty short. This flows on well from the item we've just heard about our transport advocacy. So as we've just heard from councillor Rennie and councillor McCarthy, transport is, is, is of great importance to our daily lives, but also to our greenhouse emissions in the near term. And probably for, for the long term, we'll continue to rely on trucks. And this is not just trucks, by the way. This is, and this, this, this is a shared procurement, a national procurement for a number of types of vehicles and equipment. And, and we're going in together with four. It's, it's from the, on the base of the whole of the state of Victoria, as well as other states and Victoria, states and territories, doing joint procurement to reduce the costs of, rather than going through a separate tender process each time, and also to get the best prices for our ratepayers, save money. They're large contracts, so we're talking, I think it's in the range of 15 to 20 million dollars overall over nine years. So it needs to be assessed carefully. The, I know just from the report, there's a quite a lot of detail. This, this has been a very detailed procurement process going into areas including ethical questions, environmental questions, financial capability, managerial capability, workplace health and safety. And there's a number of companies that have been scrutinised there and have been seen to pass the test. So on that basis, I commend the report and the endorse this procurement. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hannon. Was it councillor Rennie as secondor? I'll go to you.
Nothing to add, mayor, thank you.
Thank you very much. Have we got any further speakers? No, we'll put that straight to the vote for the contract. All those in favour, that is carried unanimously. And we'll go to 9.8, the contract award CT 2024-4, the Footpath, Footpath, Kerb and Channel Reconstruction Works Panel. Have we got any questions on this item? No. Okay, do we have a mover? Councillor Rennie, do we have a secondor? Councillor McCarthy? Councillor Rennie, you have three minutes to speak to the contract award for the panel.
Mayor, can I just get the staff to put in the recommended names so that people know who we're awarding the contract to? Thank you. We know that there are actually few things that matter more to members of our community than the quality and safety of our footpaths. And so this- And so this matter is actually really important. And one of the reasons we appoint a panel is that this enables us to be more responsive and to get more done quickly because we're not left scrambling to try and find a contractor for every individual project that comes up. Every year, council allocates a significant amount of money to footpath replacement and improvement works. Council audits its footpaths to actually identify the areas where those works need to take place. And having some excellent contractors who have been assessed against really rigorous criteria by a panel of procurement specialists is a very important part of the picture in terms of making sure that our community gets value for money in terms of what we're spending, but also really good quality outcomes. Because as I said, very few things matter more and we should always remember that our footpaths aren't just used by people who are able-bodied and people who can skip over the, the cracks. Our footpaths need to be fit for purpose for kids on scooters, for people in wheelchairs, for parents with prams, for elderly people with walking frames. All of those things really matter and footpaths contribute enormously to inclusion in that way and to health and wellbeing in our community. So thank you to the staff for doing the procurement work to come up with this panel and let's get on and make sure our footpaths are first class.
Thank you, Councillor Rennie. Would the second like to speak?
Thanks, Mayor. Given that we've just adopted our new climate emergency plan this evening, I'm going to pick up on one element of the report, which is easy to miss if you focus only on the names of the proposed panelists and factors around price and quality, which is actually what goes into the materials mix as part of the actual work that's proposed. As councillors would have seen, we do have our assessment and notes in relation to the sustainability considerations of our proposed panelists. And one thing I would like to highlight, and it's part of council's commitment within the council plan and which is reinforced through the climate emergency plan, is our commitment to use at least ten percent of recycled products in our infrastructure projects. This is part of that work towards circular economy initiatives and particularly working at a local level to, to stimulate those sorts of connections. In this case, part of what we have had to do through the panel assessment process to identify who goes on the panel is their capability to meet council's own environmental management aspirations and of course, their own environmental management policies. When we, when council specifies a project, regardless of which panelist has been chosen to undertake that work, the panelist needs to respond to council specifications. So if council says this path, these paths over the next twelve months need to be constructed with a hundred percent recyclable content, or this carbon channel needs to have this component of, of recycled content or reused content, the panelists have been demonstrated to be able to respond to those sorts of requirements. So I'd just like to commend the work of both our procurement processes, which have been in, turning in line with the policy, but also the work of our officers in ensuring that we deliver these outcomes when we assess these sorts of procurements.
Thank you, Councillor McCarthy. Do we have any further speakers? No, okay, we'll put that to the vote. All those in favour? That's carried unanimously. Thank you, councillors. And we will now go on to item ten. Items to be tabled, there are none. Item eleven is notices of motion, but councillors, while there are two notices of motion submitted by councillor Greco on tonight's agenda, councillor Greco is in apology and he has requested the items eleven point one and eleven point two be withdrawn. So we'll now move on to the next agenda item, which is urgent business. And I'll ask if there are any conflicts to declare on the item of urgent business.
Thank you, Mayor. Probably not on the procedural motion, but I do have a conflict, general conflict interest in relation to membership of the CEO Employment Matters Committee. So I retire my chair and ask Anna to sit in as acting CEO.
Thank you, Peter. We'll just get Anna to sit in the chair and we'll get Peter to leave the room. Thank you. Councillors, we do have one item of urgent business and the item is that council admit the urgent business item twelve point one, the CEO Employment Matters membership appointment onto the agenda should be considered. So we need a procedural motion to add that to the agenda. Councillor McCarthy is mover, Councillor Messina is second. All those in favour? That's carried unanimously. And I'll just check with Anna on the next steps. Councillors and members of the public, so this is a little bit last minute, but we did have a resignation from councillor Greco earlier this afternoon. He's resigned from the, what's called the CEO Performance Matters Committee. So what that means is we're one short for that committee. And the next question is, do we have any nominations for councillors that would like to be appointed to that committee? Councillor Messina?
Nations, Mayor. I'd like to nominate councillor Susan Rennie.
Thank you. Oh, sure. Councillor Rennie, would you be happy to accept the nomination? Thank you. Okay, um, thank you. So do we have any other nominations for the CEO Performance Matters Committee? No, okay. Then let me check. Thank you, thank you, Jodie in governance. So we have councillor Messina moving that councillor Rennie is appointed to the CEO Performance Matters Committee. We've got councillor McCarthy as second. All those in favour? That's carried unanimously. Thank you, councillors. So councillor Rennie is now added to the CEO Performance Matters Committee. And we'll bring back in Pete, we'll bring Brackie in the CEO. Thank you, Anna, for sitting in the chair. Anna, would you please return? So we have someone as acting CEO. Thank you. Thank you, Anna. So item thirteen is consideration of reports considered confidential. Councillors, there are no confidential reports to be considered this evening. So we are now at item fourteen, that's the close of meeting. So as there is no other business to consider this evening, I'd like to declare the council meeting closed at eight twenty-six PM. Thank you and good night, councillors and officers, members of the public in attendance and our viewers live streaming tonight's meeting. And I now request the live streaming to cease. Thank you.